Good evening, everyone. It is October 25th, Board of Education regular meeting. Thank you all for coming and being here. Are we in compliance with open meeting law notification?
Yes, we are.
Thank you. Will you please call the roll?
Carlin's.
Here.
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 Right.
Here.
Wyman.
Here.
We have four.
Thank you. And now if I could invite Marshall Anderson and Riley Blue to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Riley and Marshall are from Jefferson Elementary. And we want to thank you both so much for being here. Thank you. We have a little certificate of our appreciation for you being here tonight. Thank you very much. And as I told you before, you're welcome to stay for the whole meeting or if you don't take care of what you need to take care of. Thank you very much. And now we will hear from Jefferson's principal, Amanda Patza, please.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Amanda Patza and I'm the proud principal of Jefferson Elementary. And I'm very excited to share two points of pride for us here at Jefferson. One of them is Jefferson is currently proud to be piloting BIGS with Badges. And it's a new mentorship program that connects youth with law enforcement and first responders. This way, they're establishing strong, trusting, and lasting friendships. As part of the nationwide initiative, Big Brothers, Big Sisters of America, BIGS with Badges focuses on the social and emotional learning piece with students and building positive interactions with first responders. So our selected students are partnered one-on-one with a first responder and they're meeting twice a month. And we're excited to offer that new opportunity to our students and families. Academically, I'm also excited to talk to you a little bit about our RISE program. Fifteen Jefferson Elementary third grade students are accelerating in their reading and writing skills through our RISE program. RISE is a powerful eight-week intervention for students who need to improve their word solving, fluency, comprehension, and writing. These scholars participate in the RISE program five days a week for an hour each day. During the time, the students will rotate through different teacher-led sections, including reading, comprehension, word study, phonics, and writing. Excited to report that since starting in mid-September, all of our students have moved up three levels in their reading since starting the program. So excited to report out on that.
That's fantastic.
Thank you very much.
That's great.
And thank you to your students for coming this evening.
Yes, thanks, Amanda.
Okay. Dr. Davis, the land acknowledgement.
Yes, as we gather today, we would like to acknowledge that in Oshkosh, we are on the ancestral homelands of the Ho'uchuk Nation and the Menominee Indian Tribe of Wisconsin who lived along the western shores of Lake Winnebago, Wisconsin's largest freshwater lake entirely within its borders. We acknowledge these indigenous sovereign communities who have stewarded this land throughout the generations and pay respects to their elders, past and present. We welcome the duty and opportunity to share stewardship of these lands.
Thank you very much. Approval of agenda. Does anyone want to see anything moved?
Yeah, I would like to pull resolution number eight, please.
Okay. Eileen, did you?
I've got the witness who was making the motion. I don't have a second.
I'll second.
And I'd like to pull six.
I'll second that, too.
Just a point of order.
Action.
I believe that our policy calls for these kinds of notifications to be given to the board president the day before the meeting, just for future reference. Thank you.
While we're at it, let's just pull seven as well.
Okay. So we are pulling six, seven, eight, and nine is already individually considered. Board administrative reports. The board president's report. I was very excited, along with a few other board members, to be in attendance at the Oshkosh North Veterans Courtyard yesterday for their flagpole dedication ceremony. It was very impressive to see nine groups come together to sponsor a flagpole. And I think one thing that makes this project so interesting is not just this year's North Community students that are doing this. This is a project that was started a little over two years ago. So you had three different classes that were part of this project. And after this amount of time, it came together. So shout out to Susie Leib, who was the emcee yesterday, and a community's coach, and her entire team, and all of the community students who made this possible with all of their fundraising. Jackie Kifmeyer certainly was an impetus in putting this together while she was principal at North. And thank you very much for giving them the support they needed for a job well done. Thank you very much. Superintendent's report.
All right. So superintendent good news report for tonight. Again, reporting out on a lot of great things that are going on throughout our district. So Shapiro Elementary recently hosted the Fall Family Engagement Event. Families were able to explore breathing techniques, make a math game to take home, learn about finding good-fit books, and create a journal to promote writing at home. We love that our families are in our schools, connecting with our staff, and being part of their children's education. So thanks for everybody that came out to Shapiro Elementary for that program. Fourth and fifth graders at Roosevelt Elementary had the chance to create the T-shirt design to represent their school to highlight its 100th year. Mrs. Mulder's Roosevelt art teacher kicked off the design process at the start of the school year, and top designs were shared with and voted by the Roosevelt staff. The school community is now able to order the T-shirt and show their school pride. And congratulations to Peyton, who's shown in that picture as the fifth grader for this year's winning artist. So congratulations to everybody that participated in that. Wanted a quick shout out to our Oshkosh West state qualifiers. We had in West tennis, we had Kate Conger, the double team of Kate Conger and Keegan Potter. And the equestrian team, students Sequoia Eckstein and Ava Wiesenberg. So congratulations to those ladies on a job well done and great job throughout their competition season. We recently had Vell Phillips Middle School students enjoying their new culinary arts kitchen and producing some wonderful things over there. Students recently learned how to prepare and bake personal mini muffin pizzas, which I need to put on my schedule to make sure that I get over there next time they're cooking. So it's great to see them using that new space. We also love seeing our staff members having fun and making a difference in our community. We had Team Wolf Pack representing Carl Trager Elementary, being the educators champions at the Spellbound for Literacy, an adult, a team adult spelling bee. So it was great to see them out. All the proceeds for that event support the Winnebago County Literacy Council. So thanks to all of them for spending that time for a very worthy cause. Our Oshkosh Fire Department has been visiting schools and classrooms across the district. And we're grateful for them spending their time to get to know our students and teaching them important safety information. Roosevelt kindergartners were able to meet and learn from firefighter John during Fire Safety Month. So thank you for taking the time to spend with our students. Mr. Marowski and Mrs. Zanker recently hosted a book tasting for students at Oak Lawn Elementary School. They transformed Oak Lawn's media center into a Papa Jean Ra restaurant. And students were able to learn about some of the great books in the library. So thanks for your creative juices flowing there. So it sounds like a great event. As was mentioned earlier, yesterday, we had service members and family members attend the Oshkosh North students and staff, the community flag raising ceremony, in which nine military flags were dedicated and flown for the first time. The ceremony marked the end of a two-year fundraising project led by the communities' program. The addition of the flagpoles enhances the visibility of the veterans' courtyard, which has been already established, and is another way to pay tribute to the school's service members and military branches they represent. Personally, it was an honor to experience this ceremony. And as the district, we have so much to be proud for, proud of, and thankful for our veterans' courtyard at Oshkosh West, as well as the veterans' wall, or I'm sorry, the courtyard over at Oshkosh North and the veterans' wall at Oshkosh West is a way to recognize our veterans. So thank you for everybody who participated in that event. Congratulations is due for Vicki Poyer, our Career and Technical Education Curriculum Coordinator, for winning the Northeast Wisconsin Manufacturing Alliance 2023 Career Pathmaker Administrator Award. Vicki was recognized during an award ceremony last night for her outstanding leadership in our School to Work program. Vicki's efforts have resulted in valuable learning experiences for our students and a robust talent pipeline for our Oshkosh manufacturers. This regional award celebrates the strong partnerships that have been formed between manufacturers and education, and it's an honor to have one of our own leading the way. So congratulations to Vicki on that award. And then just a highlight of the places that I've been out and about, and want to thank everybody for their engagement in hosting me in many different places throughout the communities. So it's been great first eight weeks of our school year. And that concludes the superintendent's good news report for tonight.
Thank you very much. A lot of good news. District administrators supplemental reports. We would like to start with the verbal report from the board listening session of October 11th, Mrs. Conrad Peters.
We had one community member spoke at the last listening session. The community member spoke on three topics. The topics were book banning, increasing good news reporting, and giving teachers more freedom in the curriculum. The community member was thanked for bringing the topics forward to help improve our schools.
Thank you very much. And I believe you were up.
Can I ask a point of clarification?
Sure.
She spoke about the need to not ban books.
Correct. Correct. Thank you. And next up, Mrs. Conrad Peters, workers' compensation.
So one of our key progress indicators is what is known as the mod rate. The mod rate is essential to talking about student and staff safety because that is our number one priority. We talked about that is a numerical number, saying that how are we doing compared to when it comes to our workers' comp claims, when it comes to our insurance expenditures? It is a ratio. That particular mod rate is actually produced annually. But what feeds into that is the actual claims. And so we will be reporting on those quarterly. So if you go down to letter C within there, this quarter, we had 34 claims compared to 24 in the same time period last year. So that's one area that we are monitoring and we are continuing to look at because we want that number to actually come down. The numbers are in there as far as what the actual claim amounts are. But one thing we are working on is ensuring that we have an accurate amount of insurance, like holds or reserves, held for us to be able to pay out claims. So we are working with them on that. The other thing is, is when we do have claims, is to make sure that we are looking at and identifying what are those claims. And we've identified that most of our claims are around student-staff injuries. And so we are currently focused on prevention efforts and training for that, including nonviolent crisis intervention, verbal de-escalation training, and refresher training for staff to make sure that everyone is safe.
Any questions?
Yeah, regarding, you talked a lot at the end about training for staff to keep people safe. But are there anything else we can do from a building standpoint to create safer environments as well?
I think it's in the moment. When you are as an adult and you're working with a student, is remembering your training as you're in that moment. And so the key is retraining, refresher training, and making sure that we are staying in our executive states and working with students in a way that's going to de-escalate the situation. So from like an environmental piece?
Yes.
I think we're in a good spot. It's really about our interactions.
Because that is something I've heard from staff, is just making sure that the buildings and the rooms are set up for them to be able to be successful in those moments.
Correct. And that's analyzed as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. Cybersecurity update, Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, everybody. So not much has changed since the last quarterly report, although I was reviewing the report that I provided for you, and I did notice a typo. So the yearly training started this fall, but the due date is October 31st. So I don't have completion percentages yet on what those numbers are. But I should be able to provide that for my next quarterly report. A lot of our cybersecurity initiatives have focused on our systems and some of those kinds of things, working with consultants, making sure that we have some of those systems in place. But then also, the easiest vector for those breaches to come in through is through the people. So we focus a lot on training. You'll see in our KPI, we emphasize a fish rate, and then also the percentage of training that our teachers and our users are completing. So we have a lower fish rate now than we did this time last year, but we've seen an increase over what we had in the previous report. And that has to do with just the new year. We have a lot of turnover at staff and things like that. We expect that that number is going to come down significantly, even though 11% is the official fish rate as of right now. But that's not actually a very bad figure for us to start at. So optimistic about the future and the effectiveness of the training that we are putting in place. So I'm very confident in our current posture for cybersecurity for the district.
That's great. And a reminder to board members, if you haven't done your cybersecurity retraining by October 31st.
Correct.
Get it done.
Please.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Committee report. Education committee.
All right. So we met on Thursday, October 5th. Only item on the agenda was course additions, deletions, and modifications. These will be voted on later tonight. So Jackie Kifmeyer explained the four course modifications being proposed for next school year include a name change from Consumer Finance to Finance for Life. This brings greater clarity to the course. It will also supply, it does supply the .5 credit needed for graduation in financial literacy. Culinary Arts II, this is a change from grades nine to 11 to grades 10 to 12, gearing towards upperclassmen. Design II Fashion and Interior, this is also a grade change to 10 to 12 as the focus geared towards upperclassmen. And then Personal Financial Planning, this is a change of the course description to be more reflective of the standards and requirements being met within the classroom. This will hopefully attract students who want to manage money and success instead of students who are only business-focused. Five additions. Global Academy will be adding a Global Diversity Studies course to help students understand and celebrate the wide array of cultures and people in this world. Global Academy will be adding Academy Geography to replace AP European History, allowing students to have greater opportunities to develop interdisciplinary skills in English, Spanish, and Social Studies. Global Citizenship and Experiential Leadership is being added to provide students more opportunities to interact and impact local and global communities through a variety of activities, including field trips, guest speakers, and service. So those three are all part of Global Academy. UWO CAP Journalism is being added to offer students an option to learn how to write more like a journalist and analyze journalistic styles. The district already employs staff to teach this course. And then Mental Strength is in addition to support student athletes' mental health and strength, providing students with knowledge of the psychological factors that impact performance, such as motivation, concentration, focus, confidence, anxiety, and fear of failure. The course offers students tools to support growth and mental toughness and the pressure that accompanies being a student athlete. So that's kind of a combination of the current strength and conditioning, adding a mental health piece to it. It's not replacing anything. And then there were no deletions for this coming year. We meet again on Thursday, November 2nd, and I'm sure we will discuss these courses more in a few minutes. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Very exciting.
Could I ask a clarification question, please? Regarding the AP World History? Is that just coming out of Global Studies? I didn't hear you say that it was being deleted overall.
No, it's just within Global Academy. It's being, and I may phone a friend to click clarification on that.
So AP European will stay as an offering? So it's taken, but it won't be exclusive to the global.
Okay. Thank you. Just for the microphone, AP European History is not being removed. It's just being removed from that program, right from Global Academy, and we're adding Academy Geography instead.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. Facilities and Finance, Dr. Herzog.
Thank you, Mrs. Wyman. Facilities and Finance, excuse me, met Thursday, October 12th. We looked at sub-rate, substitute rate pay, and Mrs. Johnson had compared that to neighboring, that of neighboring districts, and there are no changes being recommended at this time. Gable Helmbricht of the Recreation Department gave a summer programming update from summer 2023. There was a variety of programming that was offered. 14 different community partnerships were involved. $18,000 in grants, including $10,000 from the Kimball Foundation, will go right back into the Alberta Kimball Auditorium. And there is an improvement in sound at the Alberta Kimball Auditorium for individuals with hearing issues. Mr. Nihan spoke about bills payable. There's a new opportunity for the community to have access to the bills payable in a line-by-line numerical data document. And a new partnership is being considered that would allow for the monthly bills payable to be shown on the district's website in a more visually appealing manner. Fund 46 will be a discussion at the November 9th meeting, and a long-range plan is being developed for all of the OASD playgrounds. We also had a brief discussion on a proposal, request for proposal, RFP, for district banking. Our next meeting will be November 9th at 7:30.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Legislative Committee, Dr. Herzog.
Thank you, Mrs. Wyman. The Legislative Committee met yesterday at 8:30. A new draft of talking points was shared for the committee to review after recommended changes were made from the previous meeting. The document now includes updated financial information on the voucher program as well as state aid. Talking points will include a message of gratitude to our lawmakers for the lower revenue ceiling, special education funding, mental health funding, and early literacy investment. Another topic of discussion will be career and technical education. Dr. Davis reported on attending the Chamber's Government Relations Meeting where local representatives were present. The district is advocating for an increase in CTE funding, that's Career and Technical Education at the state level, in order to set consistent and guaranteed incentive dollar amounts. Finally, the last topic to be addressed is the school voucher program. Dr. Davis spoke about the voucher impact increasing from $4.7 million in 2022-23 to $7.1 million in 2023-24. Per pupil amounts for public high schools, students would be $11,000 this year, which would be less than what is provided for the private high school students, which is $12,731 or a difference of $1,731. Taxpayer dollars are collected through the district and passed along in the voucher program, to the voucher program. The district must levy in order to cover what is lost in this pass-through, which impacts the mill rate. The Oshkosh Herald will be working on a news article in December to better assist community members in understanding how the voucher system works and how it affects their mill rate. Dr. Davis is looking to have collaborative conversations with leaders from the private schools about working together and communicating what is happening with the voucher dollars. He also plans to reach out to service clubs to communicate information, creating an environment for people to ask questions after they have been provided with information and where it is going. A next point of interest, the meeting was scheduling meetings with lawmakers. We always try to have Dr. Davis and one school board member from the team, the Legislative Committee team, meet and discuss areas of interest. And the talking points I just shared with you would be what would be the starting points of those conversations. Two of those meetings have already been scheduled. And finally, I provided an update on WASB. Even though the legislature passed the budget earlier this year, there is still an ongoing conversation in the legislature on a variety of topics, including many relating to education. One of those is a bill draft that would expand alternative pathways for teacher licensure candidates to pass, in essence, pass or substitute the FORT test. A Senate committee is voting to recommend passage of the Republican Party's counterproposal to Governor Evers' workforce development package, which would include retired school staff being able to come back and work at an earlier date than is now in the law. And, excuse me, the Senate is also looking at legislation on low revenue ceilings, including referendum interest on the ballot. Our next meeting will be on November 28th.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you very much. Policy and Governance, Mrs. Carlin.
Thank you, Ms. Wyman. The Policy and Governance Committee also met yesterday at 7:30 a.m. We reviewed around 20 policies that had Neola technical updates. Most of these changes, again, were very minor, and we kind of had a robust discussion on the process that we get these policies from Neola. A few of them had just been reviewed a few months prior. So I think we're going to be looking into a more efficient way to kind of manage some of these policies that keep coming back. We did have three policies that will be coming back to the committee. The first one was on Student Code of Conduct. We want to review that at another meeting because there is some verbiage in there we might want to change. Also, Dr. Coleman will be addressing bullying and making sure that we review it alongside our Policy 0144 Conflict of Interest. The other one was the grievance procedure will be coming back at the request of HR so that we can, Johnson had requested this, so that we can have additional language regarding who is responsible for grievance costs. Our next meeting is on November 28th as well. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you very much. And Dr. Herzog, CISA VI update and WASB update.
Thank you, Mrs. Wyman. The CISA VI Board of Control met on October 10th. It was a fairly simple meeting, voting on consent items and a new vendor contract. Ted Nitske, the CEO out there, presented several points to ponder, one being that CISA VI is capable of providing, more than capable, of providing districts and their boards with high-performance training. Also, CISA VI has services available to help districts with their state report card results and making plans moving forward. Again, Mr. Nitske emphasized the importance of communicating the value and the results of our early childhood programs specifically for grades K through 2 students, noting that if students stay in your district through grades K-2, they are most likely to stay there throughout the rest of their educational career. He also noted that with Act 20, which was the new reading legislation, CISA VI currently has 233 contracts to work with districts or schools to implement that new law. And noted that there is a bill in the state legislature which would allow public schools to change their start date. Currently, public schools cannot start school before September 1. This would allow an earlier start date, but not including the Friday before Labor Day. So even if a district wished to start that Monday, they could have students in school Monday through Thursday, but not Friday. I'll give you further updates as he presents them. And finally, Wisconsin Association of School Boards is hosting Region VII
And finally, Wisconsin Association of School Boards is hosting Region 7 Annual Meeting. That's tomorrow night in Nina. There are three of us going, Mrs. Carlin, Dr. Davis, and myself, and unfortunately, Mrs. Solaji is not on the attendance roster, but she is receiving an award tomorrow night. We will make sure that she receives that. There is a Fall Legislative Conference on Saturday, November 4th, at the Heidel House. Some very relevant topics that may be of interest to you as board members. If you haven't signed up, I'd encourage you to look into that. And finally, the registration for the State Convention in January, the Education State Convention in January in Milwaukee should be out soon. Thank you.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Questions? Thank you, everyone, for your reports. We will move now to non-agenda-related public forum. We have one person signed up. And when you come up, Mrs. Erdman, please state your name, the address, your address, the topic you wish to address, and state clearly and concisely your matter of concern. You'll have three minutes, and remember, the use of specific names may lead to, district personnel may lead to legal liability. If you would like to pursue the district's formal complaint process by contacting the superintendent's office, and they can direct you to the appropriate administrator. Go.
I want to talk about student suspensions, and I want to begin by saying, why do suspensions matter?
Point of order?
Yeah.
I need your name and your address, please.
Oh, sorry. My name is Jean Erdman, and I live at 415 South Meadow Street.
Thank you.
Oshkosh, 54902.
South Meadow.
Thank you. Why do suspensions matter? I think that Oshkosh has too high of a suspension rate, and they matter because students out of classrooms miss the opportunity to learn. I think they also leave students feeling emotionally disengaged, and for some students it can be traumatic, for some students it maybe is fun, I'm not sure, there's probably a range of emotions there. But I think it is too high, and comparing districts around the valley, it's at the higher end. So what is the big picture? The big picture to me is that the suspension rate is an urgent matter, warranting our best resources to lower the suspension rate. Okay? The bottom line, I think, is that people who supervise suspensions should be excellent communicators who are exceptionally well-prepared. Perhaps staff can be moved around a bit because sometimes we give, I think old-school thinking was that parapros with less training perhaps than teachers handle suspensions, but that's kind of old-school thinking, and if we really want to tweak that suspension rate and get it down, I would suggest that particularly at the schools with higher suspension rates, we consider moving some staff around so, or making assurances somehow so that the people who handle suspensions are really, really well-trained to deal with students who may feel alienated, who may have difficulty connecting with school, that we put more resources into that or provide more, more training. Because I think unless we make some personnel changes, no criticism to individuals, but unless we make some personnel changes, I don't think we're taking the easiest route to reducing the suspension rate, which is probably my number-one priority as an Oshkosh former student, former mom, and almost soon grandma of a student in the district. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jean.
Thank you.
Okay, and we come to agenda-related public forum. First up, Mr. Berry. Please state your name and address.
Thank you. Ron Berry, 1132 West 7th Ave.
West 7th Avenue?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, here we go. I'm here about the tax levy that I watched the meeting last that we had, and I wanted to bring up some points that I felt were missed. That is the part of poor people when it comes to what it's going to hurt when you guys are just figuring out if you're going to raise the tax levy. It comes down to people's rents are going to go up because the landlords aren't just going to eat it. So they're going to give all the poorer kids that you guys say that you care so much about, but instead you're going to make it harder on their lives. And then academically, statistically, as we've seen, they do worse. So if you want to help kids, like you're always saying you do, don't raise the tax levy up to 12%. I shouldn't say the mill rate. And secondly, there are also middle-class people are struggling right now. And as we found out from a very good person a couple of meetings ago, gave a great story that explains stuff, which one of her members figured he was confused, but the story, you missed the point. The story was, people are hurting. So by raising it more, you are, you're just going to hurt them more. And then, like I said, academically, kids are going to get hurt, and then you're going to need a referendum anyway to get the other two points. If you lose trust on what you said you did, what you were going to do, people are not going to vote for that referendum, and you barely got the last one passed. So if you're going to end up just sitting there and saying, well, now we're going to raise it, why would anybody trust you? You give you more money. So by, and all it's going to do is get rid of the debt, is we found out last time. You know, it's not going to give you more money to do more stuff. You're just getting rid of debt quicker by putting it on the taxpayer, and it's going to end up hitting the poor people worse than anybody else. And your problem isn't the taxes, your problem is we found out a revenue problem. And all I ever hear is that the vouchers are killing us, the vouchers are killing us, the vouchers are killing us. Well, if somebody has a granddaughter in a private school and knowing the reasons that they're there, maybe we should see why they're doing so good instead of sitting here and complaining how bad it is that we're giving them money. Why are they doing good that we're not? Are we on the wrong way that we're trying to do stuff that people don't want to come here? As Kelly explained, that maybe we should find out, you know, how a survey and when they leave, as you would at the job. Four, two seconds, sorry. You know, this, you're giving, you're borrowing power, you're not giving it to use our money wisely. You have to run it somewhat like a business. And if you're just going to waste money as far as, you know, if I were a head of a business and you were going to get rid of rate, but it was going to kill my bottom line, then y'all would be fired, I'm sorry. That's how I'd run my business. I'll leave it at that, since I'm only down to 12 seconds. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Mrs. Erdman.
My name is Jean Erdman. I still live at 415 South Meadow Street in Oshkosh. And I would like to talk about finances, but I have a couple of different things. By the way, the previous speaker and I just found out we live in the same neighborhood and we've not met before, so that was kind of nice. Okay, the public schools in Wisconsin actually have a higher proficiency testing record than Wisconsin school choices, and that's from the latest DPI report. Now, why does this matter? Test scores are emphasized. I think they're overemphasized. I think there are many things that parents want other than test scores, but they are emphasized in the politics of education. Parents want other things, too. They want their kids to get along, they want their kids to figure out what they're good at, they want their kids to have good mental health. And public schools are getting criticized somewhat out of context in a very misleading manner for their test scores, I believe, by the numbers. Let's look at the numbers, okay? In the Wisconsin Choice Program, the Reading and Language Arts, and Language Arts is reading, writing, speaking, listening, language acquisition, kind of all things related to that, related to literacy. The proficiency rate for the Wisconsin Choice Program is 22.1. The proficiency rate for the public schools is 38.9. In math, the proficiency scores for the Wisconsin Choice Program is 17.9, and in the public schools, it's 37.4. So if you hear and criticisms of the public schools that their proficiency scores are not what we'd like, that's true, but don't be misled into thinking that the Wisconsin Choice Program voucher schools are better, they're substantially worse. Okay, the big picture. The Oshkosh Area School District was forced by state legislative action to give $4 million, 4.1, or I forget what somebody just said, 4.7, 4-point-something, other than zero, dollars for the voucher Wisconsin Choice Program, and now it's going up to 7.1. That's a lot of money. That's a heck of a wonderful home-building program. That's a wonderful, I mean, you could have individual tutors for every child who's below grade level for $7 million. Okay? And for those who think the school board is being less than thoughtful, I want to commend the members of the board who were on the board at the time, who by the timing of the referendum, you went to referendum at a really tough time financially, but you saved this district $31 million in saved interest. Okay? $31 million, that's a heck of a responsible board to save us $31 million. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jean.
Mr. Hess. Welcome.
Thanks, Chris. Please, pass it. Got it?
Just make sure that I get one of those.
Oh, sure. Right, well, I'll, I can share with my car.
There should be. You can take mine. Tim Hess, 2645 Templeton Place. You know, I watched two weeks ago, and I got to say, I was very thankful that you guys heard you lowered it down to 4%, and I appreciate that. I appreciate that we've gone up. I'm not thrilled with that, but what I want to talk about is, I was a little bit concerned. I think, Kelly, you asked the question, how did we come to 4%? And the first thing that we were told was, well, it was roughly a 1.3% net new construction. But the problem with that is the fair majority of that is on Oshkosh Avenue, and because it's on Oshkosh Avenue, it's in a TIF. It's not going to help the taxpayer at all. And then the other thing that we heard was that, well, the state legislator was going to give more tax credits in part because they saw that we increased the overall revenue that you guys were going to get. And I go, did we seriously just make the argument that somebody is going to give us a tax credit, but rather than let the taxpayer have it, we're going to take it and pay down debt? That was the logic that we were using, and I was just like, that can't be the case, that can't be how we came up to 4%. Look, I came to this community 16 years ago, and as a math professor, I was excited because the Oshkosh District was at the top in terms of mathematics achievement scores, and I've watched over the last 16 years it decline. I've seen English Language Arts kind of stagnate, all the things that, Barbara, I think two weeks ago you talked about, and you said, hey, we got to do more than just admire this data, we need accountability, we need to do stuff about this kind of thing. And I look at all that, and I just shake my head, but I go to myself, at least I understand that all of you care about this, all the administrators, everybody wants stuff to get better. But this, what I struggle with is that this is just a conscious choice. And so what I've shown you here is what you all have on the district website in terms of how much money you told the taxpayer this was going to cost them by each of their property values. Then what I also did is actually went and pulled up property tax bills, $150,000 house, $200,000 house, $250,000 house, and looked at, it turns out in 2016, they made it where any referendum stuff needs to get placed on that property tax bill. And if you look three-quarters of the way down in blue, it shows you what the impact was. And so you can look at last year and say, geez, somebody who had a $250,000 house, they thought they were going to have to pay $212, but what you charged them was $926. So that's a difference of $714. And what you're proposing to do is increasing it more, and now 926 isn't enough, you're going to $1,000, and I'm going, at what point do we say, we don't need to do this? This isn't for operations, this isn't for recreation, this is just to pay down debt. And I suspect the taxpayer isn't thrilled with this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hess.
Thank you.
As always, appreciate everyone's input. Thank you very much. Moving on to Consent Resolution Agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished the background material on each item or is discussed in a previous meeting. These will be acted on upon with one vote without discussion, and this is number one through five.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Dewitt.
Aye.
Herzog.
Aye.
Carnes.
Aye.
Solaji.
Aye.
Aye.
Wyman.
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Okay, and the first one that was pulled is High School Course additions, deletions, modifications for '24, '25.
So moved.
Second. Carnes and Dewitt.
Yes.
Well, I apologize for not pulling this earlier, but I decided to pull it when I came in because it was a gloomy day, and I specifically wanted to talk about the new Mental Strength course that'll be offered for athletes at North and West, right? Because I had some parents from North tell me that course looks awesome, it'll help our athletes who are under a lot of pressure, you know, dealing with academics and their athletic commitments. And I wanted to just be able to say on record that I think it's a really good thing and that it's going to be able to help the kids on both sides of town, which I know both sides of town are super excited about. Some parents thought just West was going to get this addition, but there's North parents that want it a lot and are equally as excited. So on this gloomy day, I thought it would be great to emphasize mental health and some, and a good step that we're taking in the district for that, to help our kids, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more comments? Okay, call the roll, please.
Herzog.
Aye.
Carnes.
Aye.
Solaji.
Aye.
Aye.
Wyman.
Aye.
Carlin.
Aye.
Dewitt.
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Okay, number seven, Retired OASD Substitute Teacher Pay Rate, Increasing Limitation of Graduated Tiered Pay Scales. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Solaji.
Second.
Dewitt. Discussion.
I just pulled it because I don't want to vote on anything that has to do with substitute teacher pay.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Call the roll, please.
So, Carnes, are you just going to say President?
Present.
All right, Carnes, President. Solaji.
Aye.
Ray. Aye.
Wyman.
Aye.
Carlin.
Aye.
Dewitt.
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. And number eight, Purchase a Property at 751-755-SOUTH PARK AVENUE. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Yeah, so I just had a few questions in regards to this. I don't know if this is something that we're able to discuss as a board or if Drew is able to, or whomever is bringing this forward. I'm curious as to who appraised this property at 755. I have a list of about five questions, so like I said, I don't know if anybody wants to come up.
Mr. Nihon.
Yeah, Drew's been working directly with that.
Thank you, Drew.
So Anita Bloom is our district realtor, so she does the market analysis and provides all the information to me.
Okay. And I did notice in looking at this that this is not, again, that checkbox was checked stating that it did not fit into the budget, so I'm curious where this money is coming from.
At this point, it would be planned out of the fund balance. We typically do not build in money into the budget for buying properties just because it's not something that we typically do on a typical annual budget.
Sure. So in that price listed, does that include raising the building?
No, it does not. That would, that will come out of Mr. Fox's budget, and he does have cushion in his budget for unexpected items such as raising a property.
So would, when would we be furnished with that information? Or how do we?
When, when that property gets done, raised? That's a small enough amount that never typically comes to the board when that, that happens. I believe typically a property being raised is landed in the $15,000 ballpark, and again, that's something that Mr. Fox works into his budget, so it, it's not an outside-of-budget or outside-of item that would necessitate that it comes to the board.
Okay, and then I noticed also that the price was not listed on the other vacant lot. Do we know what that is?
It's, it was a total price.
Okay.
The house was assessed at $190,000. And again, that's something that Mr. Fox works into his budget, so it, it's not an outside of budget or outside of item that would necessitate that it comes to the board.
Okay. And then I noticed also that the price was not listed on the other vacant lot. Do we know what that is?
It's, it was a total price.
Okay.
The house was assessed at $190,000, and then the vacant lot was. So it was written up because it's same owner for both. All of the paperwork got done in, as one package.
My final question, I know I've asked this a couple times. In fact, I asked it yesterday. So what happens if, for whatever reason, this upcoming referendum were not, would not pass? What happens with that property?
The properties that we have gotten permission from the board to purchase along Georgia and South Park are to provide us with more flexibility when Phase Two does pass, that we have options for how that new construction building looks within that property. It just gives the district more flexibility if we can have that whole corner as well.
And if, and if the referendum doesn't pass, then we have more green space to be able to be creative with that space as we move forward. So either way, it'll be a value add and expansion of that school footprint.
Thank you. That was all the questions I had. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? Call the roll, please.
Solaji. Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Wyman.
Aye.
Carlin.
Aye.
Dewitt.
No.
Herzog.
Aye.
Carnes.
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Okay. And individually considered resolution, number nine, tax levy. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I would actually like to make a motion to amend the resolution.
I think we have to motion here just to pull it live, so I'll motion.
Right. I'm sorry.
Second.
Okay.
Now it's live.
Well, then I will.
I'm so sorry.
Well, then I will make a motion to amend the resolution such that the tax increases go no more than 4% as was presented two weeks ago.
There has to be a second. Do we want any discussion?
Well, second.
Is the second for the discussion? Yes.
Right?
You can't discuss without a second to an amendment.
Correct.
Right. So now we've got a first and a second to the amendment and then discussion.
Yes, discussion. Do you have all of the people, Eileen?
I have. The original one was motion by Carnes, second by Wright. Dewitt popped in saying she wanted to make an amendment to it, and then Wright seconded it.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
So at a previous meeting, we had talked about 4%. That was prior to us getting our final numbers from the state of Wisconsin, as we always get those on October 15-ish. And so, so I'll have Drew just talk about just what those final adjustments were from that 4% increase that we had talked about at the last meeting.
Yes. So there is a couple moving parts that happened. State aid came in, just about $2 million less than what we were anticipating, which is, which increases local burden, local taxes. Doesn't change the dollar amount that we had for the cap amount, for the revenue amount. It just changes who, the tax burden on who gets to do the cost share. The vouchers also came in higher. And again, that comes on out of local taxes off of that share. So both of those were really the bigger factor. Again, another, the caution I would give you on reducing to a 4%, the, for Phase Two, we need a debt levy north of $25.5 million right now. So the less we paid debt off now, the more tax increase is going to happen. That tax levy is going to go up significantly to get more debt layered in. So that, at some point, you're going to pay that, and it's going to, going to have a bigger impact down the road.
I have a question, Mr. Nehans. Under major points, you have a chart labeled A, and it delineates the various funds from 10, which is the general fund, on through 80, which I believe is Recreation Department?
Yes.
Okay. And then you note the total levy. And then there's a line at the top of the next page called the mill rate. Some years ago, the district board had made a commitment to try to keep that mill rate at about 9.4. And what I believe I'm, I'm reading this line to communicate is that this percent of increase in the 6% range still would lower the mill rate by roughly 32 cents.
Correct.
So the mill rate would be less, which means that people would be paying less in taxes on their properties.
Not necessarily.
Really?
Okay. And lowering the tax levy, whether it's 4% or 6.1, that doesn't necessarily equate to lower taxes for, for homeowners.
Thanks. I appreciate that clarification.
Yes.
But I do note that the mill rate is going down by 32 cents.
Correct. And typically, why, why mill rate gets used is it, it goes off the equalized value. So our property that we tax off of and that, that is calculated on is, is based on equalization of our values. That value is without TIF dollars.
Okay.
So they, they remove all the TIF and only money that comes to the district or is accounted for within the municipalities for the district. So this is the way we have, because there's seven municipalities in Oshkosh. They all have different assessments and a different assessment rates, depending on how they want to do it. That's up to each municipality. So the easiest way to, especially when you have multiple municipalities for a school district, is to equalize everything. So roughly, equalized, last year we were at $940 per $100,000 house value. This year, we would be at $907 for every $100,000 of property value. Again, that's an equalized dollar amount. It doesn't equate to whether or not people's taxes individually are going up or down.
If the amendment were to pass, would that mean that there would be less revenue for the district?
No, we would not levy and pay off as much debt.
Okay.
So then when we go to issue more debt, the tax levy will go up accordingly.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any further questions on the amendment?
So we, the 6.17, we are trying to tier this and set ourselves up for success. If we get too far behind that, there's going to be too big of a jump at some point. Is that?
Yeah, if we, if we reduce that, I would expect, if, if we're, if we're trying to go for a question, you're going to, you're going to be hard pressed to get there without north of 7 and 8% tax levy increases the next three years.
Okay.
Even as is, we're probably looking, if we levy 21 and 1/2 million this year, which is what's recommended and proposed, we're still going to be looking at a five, in and around that 5 to 6% tax levy increase to step up. The more you reduce it, the more that's, the bigger that step becomes to get to when we have to borrow next.
Can we say it's, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Can we say it's kind of like a credit card, that if you don't pay it off, it just keeps building and building and building, and pretty soon you're paying a lot more finance charges than the actual goods? Is that if we don't levy at the higher amount this time?
It's, it's almost more like a layaway plan, almost, where you're trying to pay off little bits at a time to get you to your bigger step.
Yeah.
It's, it's, I think it would be more, more similar to that. We're trying to buy our way to have a less of an impact the next time we have to take on debt, to have that occur, rather than what, when we, when we had talked about the mill rate management strategy and trying to keep that part level, what, what we didn't want to have happen was the tax levy go down drastically, but then it's got to take a 80%, 120% jump north to get the next debt levy put back in. That's, that's what we're starting to approach back to. By the more, again, the more tax levy relief you give now, it's going to go north, steeper the next time.
Mrs. Solaji and Dr. Herzog.
Yeah, I, I really, really like this report. It's very clear and concise, and there's one point in the key communication that I'm going to kind of read. It says, "The total tax levy increase is 6.17%, which is higher than we talked about two weeks ago." I will point out that two weeks ago, we did, Mr. Nehans, you did tell us that you did not have that final number from the state. So it was clear that, as is often the case with numbers and getting information from the state, it's never like final till it's final. Then it goes on to say, "The voucher program is responsible for 3.52% of the increase." The increase without the voucher program is 2.65%. I just want to clarify that I have no hard feelings towards the voucher program. I actually think pretty highly of a couple of our school choice programs here in our community. I think all of us, when we talk about this, we want it to be separated. We don't want the money that goes to the voucher schools, the school choice programs, to come through us. We want it to be separate. Because if it didn't come through us, somewhere in this report, you mentioned, our mill rate would be in the $8 range. I can't remember exactly where it is. Anyway, the whole point being is if we stick with the 4%, because we talked about it last week, that means that the, the increase, the share of the increase that doesn't go to the voucher program is only 0.48%. And as an advocate for public education, while I like all education and support, I appreciate what our school choice, schools are doing here in Oshkosh, I am a supporter of public education, and that's the value that I ran on here, and that just will be really hard for me. In fact, I'll just say it now, I will not go for that, to only be a 0.48% increase that's not going to the voucher program.
Any further discussion on the amendment? Oh, Dr. Herzog.
That's okay. I think it was back in 2017, 2018, Bray and Associates did a facilities evaluation of all of our sites, and noted that at that point, we, we needed over $100 million in upgrades to our facilities. And that was simply the infrastructure, the tuck pointing, the repair of walls, roofs, and those kinds of things. It had nothing to do with instructional spaces for the 21st century. And the board in 2018, I believe, asked that there be a long-range facilities plan, believing that that was going to allow us to be better stewards of the district's funding, and to protect our students and the, and the staff in terms of the safety of our buildings and the security of our buildings, and to better prepare our students for the lives they will be leading, moving forward in this century. And so, based on the information you've shared with us, I, I, we all pay taxes. I pay taxes as well as anyone else around this table. And the people who come and visit us at the St. Vincent de Paul store asking for help with their rents and their utilities. However, from what you're saying, it would cost the taxpayers more if we did not do the 6.17% at this point. And so I will not support the amendment.
I think the one thing that really got to me that Dr. Davis said last time is that we're preparing for the future. And that's what I'm focused on, and that's why I ran for the board, is to look at our schools as a complete package, not just one-on-one as we've been doing for so long. And that's why I think the facilities plan is essential to the growth of this district. And yes, people can say it's just buildings, but it's not just buildings. We're seeing what's happening at Vell Phillips. We're seeing the services that we are able to offer, and I believe those services are going to relate to better test scores. Jean's gone. Fewer suspensions, because we are able to do so much more and understand so much more. We're being given the spaces to be able to do it. And I think it's just critical for the Oshkosh area school district to move forward. And it's unfortunate that we are in the position that we have been in, but now we're trying to make it right. And all of us are trying to make it right for future generations, and I think this discussion is very healthy, and it's really important for the community to hear our discussion. And these numbers are difficult to understand, and I appreciate that Drew has been able to put them on two pages. These are available to anyone in the community in the board packet. And if you have questions, please go there, call Drew, get answers. It's, this, we're all in this together. This is not us versus them. This is making a decision for our future and the preparation for this district.
I have one.
That's perfect. Mrs. Carron.
I, I agree with everything you just said, and I think at this time, going against the recommendation would be kind of what we did before the facilities plan, kick the can down the road. If we don't do it now, it's going to be harder in the future. So I appreciate the transparency that you've shown in developing this and, and keeping us posted and updated, and this flyer or table that you put together is, is fantastic. So I hope that we have that somewhere on our website. Thank you.
And I do hope for those that are going to have a difficult time paying for this, and I do feel for the people that are renting, because the cost is going to get passed on to them. That's just what happens. But I hope through that, that we are able to take any of the children of any of those people and able to give them an education which will make them very successful in their future years, and as adults. Okay. Any other comments? Mr. Wright.
I was against the 12% increase, because I think that we need to weigh, you know, the harm that we can do to the community by having such a large increase versus what we need to accomplish in this community and school district. No one can, no one living in this community would be able to look at the way, what our facilities, the point our facilities got to, and say that we don't need to have a responsible plan to improve them in the future. You know, regardless of what the community side decides, South Park probably isn't, you know, we got to do something before it's 140 years old, you know? And this, the money that we're spending isn't, it isn't going towards a bad thing. I mean, we're not flying in Miley Cyrus or something. I mean, we're paying down debt, you know? So it's not, the money isn't going towards the worst thing that we could possibly putting it towards. You know, we're paying, paying down debt so that we have options.
In the future.
In the future, so that we can improve facilities, because we have to do something with facilities. We can't sit and just watch them get to the point that we allowed them to get to. But I wanted, I personally wanted that number to be something that we could be comfortable with. Obviously, I'd like the levy to be as low, as low as possible. But through this consolidation plan, we are seeing cost savings. You know, we have a 700, roughly $700,000 cost saving because of the consolidation in the Vell Phillips. We're paying down debt quickly. And in business, sometimes you have to invest a little bit before you're fully up and running, you know, like a smooth machine. Any business person will tell you that sometimes you need to invest in efficiencies. So, you know, this is a, this is something that I've taken, taken very seriously, and I just wanted to make that, make that statement. I will vote against four and go to the 6.17, even though I really would like to stay at four, just because I don't want us to not, I don't want the community to not have options in the future that they, you know, that they could have and that they'll deserve to be able to make the choice on. So hopefully that made sense, but, and thank you.
Okay. Mr. Carnes?
Yeah, I, I think it's important that we have this conversation. I mean, we, we heard from the community of what 12 felt like, and we came back and had the conversation. A little disappointed, we went up from four to 6.17. For the record, I was not necessarily in favor of the 12. That doesn't mean that, I think, let me state, as Barbara had mentioned, we all pay taxes in Oshkosh. We all feel everything that we decide to do here. And we are empathetic to what everyone's going through, which is why we take this so darn seriously, and why we sit around here and have this conversation, and each take a turn talking and expressing it. We've all heard from people in the community, but we're also have to balance what our goal is. And as Beth mentioned, there still is a long-term plan here that we have to take into account as well, that will more than pay for itself in the future, as we see our community start to thrive, as we save $600,000 on Vell Phillips, and maybe close to a million on Menominee when three schools come together. The operational costs will be there, the savings will be there. And so I support the 6.17 as it is. I thought the 12 was too high, but I will vote no to the amendment to go back down to four. So I appreciate Drew and Dr. Davis's work on this. It is not an easy decision, as we make decisions that affect people's lives, but we also sit around the table with a chance to positively impact a lot of people's lives as well.
Correct.
So, thank you.
Any further comments?
I just wanna make one last note of appreciation. I know last week, I said I preferred the 12%, but actually, after looking at this and hearing like Mr. Wright's comments and Ms. Wyman's, your comments, I actually really appreciate the 6%, and I am glad that we are taking a more stepped approach over a couple of years versus the 12% this year. So I just wanna note that I appreciate these conversations and all the things that I've learned.
Thank you. Okay, further?
Any other questions?
The amended?
Thank you, Mr. Drew.
So, to be clear, we're voting on the motion for the amendment of the resolution?
That's correct.
All right. Wright?
Yes.
Wright?
No.
Wyman?
No.
Carlin?
No.
Dewitt?
Yes.
Herzog?
No.
Kearns?
No.
Solaji?
No.
Motion fails.
Okay, thank you. No, number nine, tax levy.
I got nothing else.
All right.
I think we...
We're already good, we have Kearns and Wright.
We have a motion and a second.
All right, call the roll.
Wyman?
Aye.
Carlin?
Aye.
Dewitt?
No.
Herzog?
Aye.
Kearns?
Aye.
Solaji?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Request for future agenda items. Mrs. Carlin?
I don't have one. I actually do not have one. I saw everything I already asked for on the November 8th or 28th meeting, so...
Perfect, perfect, thank you. Anybody else? Announcements, anyone announcements?
I do have one.
Yes.
So as we all are aware, we are making our rounds to the three schools that we picked, and I did my first one recently, and I went to Franklin and Montree School, and I loved it. I had never been in that school before, and I don't wanna spoil what we're gonna share when we share this in whatever forum, but I think it's a great process.
Great. Our bliss. Okay, Mr. Kearns?
Thank you for that. I have now finished all of my rounds of all the schools, and have been in everything in my two and a half years, and it's been fun, but I did it while, my last two schools last week. I wanna give a shout-out to Sarah Danahy, who helps run Community for Hope. She had an event on October 12th at the Best Western downtown Oshkosh. They showed the film Coming Up for Air, talking about mental health, and I was honored to be a panelist at that event and chat through, you know, what it's like for young kids, athletes, and the stigma around mental health and what we can do to help them, and it was an incredible event, and Sarah did an amazing job. Wanted to give her a shout-out for that. And Dr. Davis was there as well, and thank him for his time as well.
Watched the movie.
Super. Anyone else?
Uh, I guess I should say good luck to Oshkosh West volleyball tomorrow, sectionals they play, I think, Commander Walk Lincoln. So there'll be people, lots of kids streaming it, and then lots of kids going to the game as well, so good luck.
And the holiday concert schedule is out, so mark those days on your calendar for a little holiday cheer. Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
Lots of seconds. I would say Carlin.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Ready?
Ready.
Carlin?
Aye.
Dewitt?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Kearns?
Aye.
Solaji?
Aye.
Wright? Aye.
Wyman?
Aye.
Carlin?
No.
Dewitt?
Yes.
Herzog?
No.
Kearns?
No.
Solaji?
No.
Motion fails.
Okay, thank you. No, number nine, tax levy.
I got nothing else.
All right.
I think we...
We're already good, we have Kearns and Wright.
We have a motion and a second.
All right, call the roll.
Wyman?
Aye.
Carlin?
Aye.
Dewitt?
No.
Herzog?
Aye.
Kearns?
Aye.
Solaji?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Request for future agenda items. Mrs. Carlin?
I don't have one. I actually do not have one. I saw everything I already asked for on the November 8th or 28th meeting, so...
Perfect, perfect, thank you. Anybody else? Announcements, anyone announcements?
I do have one.
Yes.
So as we all are aware, we are making our rounds to the three schools that we picked, and I did my first one recently, and I went to Franklin and Montree School, and I loved it. I had never been in that school before, and I don't wanna spoil what we're gonna share when we share this in whatever forum, but I think it's a great process.
Great. Our bliss. Okay, Mr. Kearns?
Thank you for that. I have now finished all of my rounds of all the schools, and have been in everything in my two and a half years, and it's been fun, but I did it while, my last two schools last week. I wanna give a shout-out to Sarah Danahy, who helps run Community for Hope. She had an event on October 12th at the Best Western downtown Oshkosh. They showed the film Coming Up for Air, talking about mental health, and I was honored to be a panelist at that event and chat through, you know, what it's like for young kids, athletes, and the stigma around mental health and what we can do to help them, and it was an incredible event, and Sarah did an amazing job. Wanted to give her a shout-out for that.